Wednesday, June 26th, year 2013, 7:00 PM. If there's anyone present who may require specialist systems to participate at this public meeting, please let us know and we'll try to accommodate. Roll call?
Councilmember Crum?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember LeFever?
Here.
Mayor Protan Fau?
Here. Agenda item number three is approved tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Crum?
Aye.
And I approve as well, too. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Agenda item number four is approved in closing Seventh Street from Maple Ave to Third Ave on July 4th for the parade.
I'll approve closing for the parade route, Seventh Street from Maple to Third Ave for the July 4th parade.
I'll second it.
Any further discussions or comments? Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Crum?
Aye.
And I approve as well, too. Tonight item four, approving closing Seventh Street from Maple Ave to Third Ave on July 4th for the parade, has been approved. Agenda item number five is approved, closing Fourth Ave from Sixth Street to Seventh Street from July 3rd through July 6th. Do you want to, do you want to speak to that, Nikki, for the chamber?
I'd actually put on there to close just half the street for the fourth, because that's what the chamber members had done in the past, and so I just went with what they had decided before. But in talking with Elmer, he thought it would be easier to do the whole street, just to savor and close the whole street, and then if we don't need the whole thing, we'll open up what the parts that we don't need. And so when I said that to you, I had just talked to the chamber, the owners that had, that we were closing like the bank and Steve and the Fourth Avenue Mall, and they were okay with that. And then in talking with Phil today, he had talked to Gene Beckner, and Gene at first was a little, he's been a little arrogant, said we've had this conversation before, but he said, you know, if we, we don't have to close that very end part, we won't, and so we're not really planning on doing that anyways, we don't think that's going to be an issue, and he was fine with that. So we're going to start it down at the bank. I think they have two rides and a concession they're putting in, but when we get here, we'll just, I'll just talk to Tom Thomas and let him know that we want him to start that in, and we'd really like to keep, you know, some spots or whatever Elmer recommends to open. And then, Elmer was a little concerned, because he's not here tonight, he was a little concerned about how people would turn around to get out, but he said, once we get that in there, he will, he'll work the traffic for them, so he's going to take care of it. Any questions for me, other than that?
Kyle, you up on all that?
I don't know if Kyle knows. I just talked to Chief, because I talked to him today, so Kyle might not be, unless you guys have talked to him.
Yeah, Chief and Scott, we've been talking.
Okay, so you guys got one, okay.
Anything else to add?
Yeah, oh, about that, yeah.
I spoke to Gene Beckner quite a bit the other night about this, and it really hurts the business when you close the road. Gene had the idea, and I kind of liked it, if we would close just the east side and make it one-way traffic southbound, which would allow enough parking, with parallel parking in front of the businesses, and a way to go just south. So he would, Elmer's not here, but he would like to make that request. It would just, you know, it would address the situation Elmer had with people turning around, it would take the same amount of signage, and it would give a lot of space to the carnival on the east side of the road. So I suppose we need Elmer to start to finalize those plans, but that's, that's what Gene would kind of like to see.
Any idea how he would designate that it was parallel parking?
You know, no. I suppose we have to put up some kind of sign or something for parallel parking, only just every, you have something to do or something.
Good. So Friday, Friday means normally they're good one.
Yeah.
Are you going to let them do that? Yeah, I'll just talk to Elmer about it and see how he wants. It's basically what Elmer wants to do, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
And how everyone, just maybe we would.
Yeah, we'll let him, we'll let him make the call.
So we have none of that type of signing?
I, that's what I was thinking, for parallel.
For parallel or for one-way? We may have a one, one one-way sign somewhere, but.
Yeah, it's a good idea. How you could change the one-way rides.
And where we like to sign, it's all concrete.
Shove them to the east, the trees. We put up, we put fireworks on the stand, or probably have a couple of those.
We do have a few concrete roads.
Yeah, and Justice's suggestions, though.
Yeah. I'd say we're just going to have to see how Phil, when they start setting up the ride.
That's kind of my thought, because I don't know what he wants.
I remember when they did that before, those rides took up the whole street. I mean, I remember a few years ago when they did that a few times, but.
Everything.
Everything passed, though. Thanks.
Any other questions for me?
Claire's done.
I know, pretty much. I just know it's bringing everything. I suppose worse comes to worse. Well, I think we should talk to Elmer. I think if we go ahead and get the okay to close the street, we let, I'll get Elmer and Tom Thomas maybe either on the phone, or as soon as they arrive, get Elmer down there, so we can figure out what they're putting there. And then Elmer can just say, yes, we'll do this, or no, we're not doing that. I mean, it's kind of up to him. He's the one who's going to have the traffic for this thing. And the carnival will do whatever we ask them to. I do know, one of the rides is called the Cyclone, he said it's the only one in the nation, and that's what he wants to put in the street, but I haven't seen it, so I don't know what it looks like.
So the proposal's for both the whole street. Gene has some reservations about that?
Right, and we don't want, we, that's why initially we just wanted to do half. And he's a, he's a very good chamber member, he's been on the chamber for a long time, and so we do not want to, you know, make it difficult for his customers to reach his door.
If you're not going to go clear it back, I don't see anyone.
No. Yeah, and he's close enough to the curb there, that there's no need to close in front of his spot there. We'll just tell him that that's not an option. Elmer just thought if we did the whole thing, it would be easier, and then we don't necessarily have to, because he's like, how do you just say three fours, or, I said, yeah, okay, that, yeah, I understand that.
You got any questions or?
My own reservations, yeah. He's going to come back and say why.
Yeah, we wouldn't do that to him, because he's a very good chamber member, so.
He's going to work with you, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a chamber, yeah, I agree, I agree.
And that's what, we, you know, he's been on the chamber for a long time, we're not, we don't want to upset him either, and he's a really good business there, so I'm understanding his concerns.
Scott?
We can, we can just use barricades to block off, and then we'll just move them as far as they need to be. I feel the one-way, that sounds like a good idea, but that's very confusing. Everybody, I mean, we're not used to that. We're going to have those now, if we try to do it one-way. I would say just close off as much as they need for the rides, put them down on the south end. I guess when those people come in and park, that's a pretty wide street, they'll get out of there going back north. I, that'd be my, I think that'd be the simplest, to try to half that in one-way, we're going to have cars. I mean, even though, people don't read signs very good, you know? You know? So, and, and that's just something that's going to be new all of a sudden, and they won't, when we rope that off for the parade, you'll be surprised how many people almost drive through the ropes, you know, because they're just usually going that way all the time. So I think we'd be better off to just close off as much as they need, and start on the south end with the rides, and then we'll put the barricades right at the end of their last ride, and leave the rest of it open. Those people are pulling in, they can get turned back around, and you may have in front of Fourth Avenue, and Gene all pulled them that way on both sides. That'd be my suggestion.
I like that idea. I like that idea.
You can make your motion just to close whatever part of the street that we need maybe, or from the south end to the north.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a res, a motion then to, it's like we're going to close, most closing all of the street. So we'll close Fourth Avenue, clear from Sixth to Seventh for July 3rd through July 6th.
Any further comments or questions? So I have a motion and a second, to approve closing Fourth Ave from Sixth Street to Seventh Street from July 3rd through July 6th. And maybe I would just add, too, that we're going to, you know, work with Logan Auto through the chamber, and they'll continue to, you know, work with them to make sure that he has parking in front of his, his place, to the third through the sixth as well, too, so. Okay. Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Crum?
Aye.
And I approve as well. Agenda item number six is to Scott's Chief Smith resignation. Chief Smith, I think he's here tonight, sends an email on Monday, June 17th, to myself and Denny Crum, and it says, "I feel the time has come for me to move on. I want to thank the city of Logan for giving me the opportunity to serve. I no longer want the responsibility to be the chief of Logan, chief of police of Logan Police Department. My last day of service to the city of Logan will be June 28th, 2013. Thank you, Elmer Smith." And again, I have a stress to myself and Denny. I did not see that, for whatever reason, whether I fat fingered it, deleted it, or whatever. And Dennis did, I called Dennis on another issue or matter, and Dennis did fill me in that, that we did receive this. So we got ahead, as police committee went ahead and contacted Elmer, and wanted to set on a visit with Elmer. I've worked with Elmer, Elmer's been, I think, with our city for a little over five years. I hired Elmer initially into our community, and from time to time, we've gone back and forth a little bit, as far as, you know, him wanting to stay in this position or role or not. And, you know, I wanted the opportunity to say, hey, your original intent was to retire at the end of the year, the calendar year, and I wanted to see if we could talk him into doing that. He said he would consider that, to Dennis and I. He wanted to talk it over with his family, he wanted to talk it over IPRs as well, too. He went to the state to figure out his retirement and what we have there. And we received another email today at 9:37, and it says, "After talking with my family and IPRs, I have decided it's time to move on. I thank the city of, the city for allowing me to serve for the last five and a half years. I will be accepting a position in the private sector to eliminate the IPRs problems. I have purchased a couple sets of cuffs out of my pocket and cuff keys, I've given them to the officers. I have purchased a badge out of my pocket, will keep that. I have two chief badges that are city property, I will turn them in with my keys. I will have nearly thirty-three items in the safe. I own my own weapon, that goes with me. Vacation, I have four weeks of vacation coming, starting January 1st of 2013. Last year I gave back to the city 108 hours of vacation, December 20, 2012. Also, there are 500 hours of sick leave not used. I would ask the city to pay the four weeks vacation to me with no IPRs taken out, as it is a benefit, not a wage. Good luck in the election, thanks, Elmer Smith." I emailed him back and asked again, what is the date? Because he didn't put a date in there, and he came back and said that June 28th, they did, so. So Nikki, you're not going to be working with Elmer?
No.
On a Friday, so, you know, we're going to have to work with, you know, Justin Kyle, and then, you know, Scott, too, is stepping up to assist them as well, so. So now we have an opening for a chief of police.
Yeah, if that posted, I think, that's my, my take on the matter, how possible, I mean, just start that all.
We can't hear you, I'm sorry.
It's on, it's on. We know that could take some time to accomplish that, it could go on for.
HSC.
All right, is that any better?
Yeah.
Okay. That could take some period of time to get that whole process through the system, as we've learned in the past, in white-skipped soap. I don't know if we need formally do anything, or just move forward with that, testing that off, it's been some time since we've had that position.
So what, what Marilyn's advising me here is, we need to figure out where to advertise, and kind of, you know, what to advertise, so let's pull out what we have used in the past to your point, Skip, and let's, let's go ahead and get that. We'll figure out where we advertised in the past, and I'm sure maybe there's some other areas or contacts or websites we can advertise as well on, too, from, from the police department perspective. The other thing we have to consider is, is that we need a mayor to hire a chief of police. The chief of police is, is the one that appoints, appoints the chief of police.
Yeah, my, my review of that, that topic, kind of, you know, because, you know, I was thinking along the same lines, how do we pull that off? Basically, that's, that's a, again, a council effort, a final, if, the way I read it is, an actual mayor pro temp can make that appointment with approval of the council.
I don't think the mayor pro temp can, but we can get, we can get a read on it, right?
We can.
Right. So we'll need to get a, we'll need to get an opinion on that, I agree.
I think the, the case otherwise is that the mayor appoints, the council approves, the.
Right, they appoint, and then the council approves the appointment. But how I understand that, again, how I understand it, is the mayor, well, the mayor pro temp has all the powers of the mayor except to hire, fire, and appoint.
Those positions of the mayor.
Right. Which is the police chief.
There's, there's a, there's a line, I think, there from, check, check that as well.
Well, we do know this, we do know that we have an opening. I believe we can go ahead and, let's advertise for the opening, and then let's continue down that path to figure out how we can get it hired. Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I wish Chief Smith was here, because, you know, five and a half years, he's done a great job for our, for our community, the citizens of our community. He's been very good to work with from, I think, from my perspective, in the time that I worked with him all the years he got in there, and I think working with the city workers and, and everybody, I think he's done a great job, too, of hiring and developing younger officers to continue to move on and further their career as well, so we just want to thank Elmer for all his, all his time for our community, and hopefully he comes to the next council meeting, and we can actually, you know, have some comments with him in person, Agenda item seven is approved bid for cleaning services at Community Center, City Hall, and Senior Citizens Center. So where we left this on Monday night, Dee, I believe we wanted to get an apples-to-apples comparison to, or make sure that we're evaluating an apples-to-apples comparison on the three bids.
And I did hear, Marilyn, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lang left a bid with Marilyn today on different things that he could do, or would do. Clean bathrooms, clear trash, restore supplies in the area, offices, to the extent of office personnel request. Entrances, glass handles, other soiled areas, wet and dry mop, open hallways, senior area of eating, cooking, and serving, also bathrooms and offices. Clean and maintain as needed, main ballroom restored to previous condition after any events, sweep, wet, and dry mop, dust vacuum, clean storerooms, meeting rooms, inside, outside windows, banes, sales, and dressings. Wax all existing waxed areas as requested or needed, and strip waxed areas annually. All above duties will be maintained in harmony with workable equipment and supplies provided by the community building. Any inconscients of duty should be reported to cleaning person immediately. His references was Pastor Gerald Furby and Gene Beckner.
So Dee, you feel that the three bids are pretty comparable?
Yes, I do, but I think the detail we got from Kaiser Detailing is my first choice.
And just for review, Daryl Lang, who Dee was just mentioning there, his bid came in at $10,890 per year, or $907.50 per month. Lois Hall came in with a bid of $11,700, and that bid is $975 per month. Kaiser Detailing came in at $11,000 annually, $423.08 per two-week period, 26 weeks per I would also comment that Daryl Lang is from Woodbine, Lois Hall is from Logan, and Kaiser Detailing is from Zer Valley, just sort of what it is.
Actually, Mike, I think Daryl Lang lives between Logan and Woodbine.
Oh, does he?
Yes, Logan, though.
The current contract, as far as everybody's aware, is with, is with Lois, and on an annual basis, it's $12,192.44, so all three bids are coming in less than the existing contract.
I'm somewhat torn, and at the same time, a little, you know, not indifferent to it, but I mean, they all look at the whole fact that we're saving some money, I think it's a great thing that that, this whole process has led to that. It's always helps to be able to be competitive and putting this out every once in a while. I don't know when the last time we've done that, because that was an exercise. You know, I'm always looking to see who the lowest bidder is, I should, we should naturally kind of look at that and try and remove that as a, as an option, first of all, so I'm kind of leaning that way, just on the dollars and cents basis. I thought Kaiser's bid was very thorough, and I, I liked the detail to it, I liked the timeframes, there was not much left for, you know, to, to wonder when they would do what, and where, and how. It was pretty specific, and I thought that was excellent. I'd just say that I felt like Kaiser's bid was probably the best, as far as professionalism of the bid itself. If you look at the numbers, of course, you know, the Langs, the lowest, but I don't, I don't know where to go.
I, so, and again, the bids are so close as well, it isn't like there's multiple thousands of dollars difference. You know, I, I think we have to just always remind ourselves, when you're, you know, in the public like this, municipality, and you go out for bid, and you get the bids, you have to have, you know, good reasons why you don't accept a low bid. I think we, we know that. And then, you know, certainly there's not a lot of differences here, that there is
After reading Lang's deal here, it says wax areas annually, and then you look over at Kaiser's, and they're going to do it as needed. So sometimes it's going to be, the floors need done more often than just once a year. So I'd be more in tune to do Kaiser's.
I'll just throw a thought out, I, I know in bid applications like this that I've experienced in the past, there's been opportunities to kind of rotate through viable options, that, you know, that maybe people that present similar product year after year, you rotate through them, and this is not something we certainly have to do, it's just a thought that came to me, that, you know, I, I think it's great to have multiple options, we struggle sometimes in the city, and you guys have seen that in the past, of having even three people bid on a lot of our projects, we're lucky to get one many times. So I think this is great that we even have this hard choice to make with all that. So I, I don't know, I'm trying to think of a win-win, and the way we could keep viable options open in the future, I think, you know, each of these folks have something, hate to see them not here any year, not here in two, five years, being able to bid on, on this business. And we don't know what we don't know with, with the two that we haven't experienced before, they have great references, I think they all checked out, probably not taking a risk on either of those with what we've had.
So Dennis, you're suggesting that there's a few small minor differences that could become greater than the difference of the actual total bid on an annual basis?
Adding the.
Right.
Yeah.
Just that his references, you know, they're not from, you know, it doesn't say that he's done cleaning for companies, and, you know, Kaiser's have, so that's another thing to look at, too.
I don't, I don't believe those are clean references, or?
Yeah. Yeah, they're good references, but I mean, it's part of the references.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid of cleaning services for Kaiser Detailing for the Community Center, City Hall, and the Senior Citizens Center.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. To approve a bid for cleaning services at the Community Center, City Hall, and Senior Citizens Center. Center, City Hall, and Senior Citizen Center from Kaiser Detailing. In the amount of $11,000 annually, or $423.08 per two-week period, 26 weeks per year, or biweekly. Any further comments or questions? Councilmember Lefebvre?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
I approve as well. Approve Resolution 13-14, a resolution to enter into a contract with Kaiser Detailing to perform cleaning services for the City of Logan Community Center located at 108 West Forest Street, Logan, Iowa. Resolution 13-14, oh, I guess we have a motion and a second. Resolution 13-14, a resolution to enter into a contract with Kaiser Detailing to perform cleaning services for the City of Logan Community Center located at 108 West Forest Street, Logan, Iowa. Whereas the City of Logan has approved a contract copies which attach to this resolution with Kaiser Detailing to perform cleaning services of the entire building, and whereas the City of Logan requires these services to maintain the building in a safe and sanitary condition. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Logan wishes to contract with Kaiser Detailing for the cleaning services for the City of Logan Community Center for the period of time from July 1st, 2013 until June 30th, 2014. Passed and approved this 24th day, it'd be the 26th day of June 2013.
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 13-14 for the contract with Kaiser Detailing to perform cleaning services for the City of Logan Community Center located at 108 West Forest Street, City of Logan.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further comments or questions? Show of motion and a second on Agenda Item Number Eight, Resolution 13-14, to enter into a contract with Kaiser Detailing to perform cleaning services for the City of Logan Community Center located at 108 West Forest Street, Logan, Iowa. Councilmember Lefebvre?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Crum?
Aye.
I approve as well, too. Resolution 13-14 has been approved. Agenda Item Number Nine is approve Resolution 13-15, a resolution setting salaries for the city employees. So we approved the 3% pool on Monday night. We then entered that pool into the total salaries, and then based on the reviews, we divided that pool up based upon the performance of those individuals. On the resolution, there is an addendum that then goes to the City of Logan employees, and it lists out the employees Marilyn, Scott, Annie, Roger, and Kyle. And what their new salary, their hourly wage would be. This is here?
It doesn't really say that, but I can find. I wish it did. That this word...
It's kind of like the other one we had, it's attached.
This is dated 6/24, and that's great, so then at the end of A or something, and then referencing here.
I think we should write that, just make that into the resolution here. And it's actually the 20th, this should be the 24th, right? Or 26, excuse me. It does. Okay, we at least approved the pool. Yeah, approved the pool.
I think it's okay, you've got the 26 now, I just think there needs to be something tying these two documents together.
Actually, it says it just on the last one that we did with the cleaning service. It doesn't say like, C. attached or something, or attached. I can't find it.
Contract copy which is attached.
Or at least we should just say Addendum A. attached or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we'll add that to it before we sleep. Yeah, because the resolution's being passed tonight.
Right.
To setting the specific hourly wage of these individuals based upon their performance reviews. We approved the pool of the 24th, the 3%.
Right.
Right, now this is approving specific hourly wages for each of these employees.
Should be 26.
Oh, okay.
So with the beauty of technology, we'll update that to the 26th, or signing it, and we'll put C. attached to Addendum A. I think that's good, so that the copies get separated. I have so much paper over here, I don't know if I can do that. I will make a motion to approve Resolution 13-15, a resolution setting salaries of city employees.
I'll second that.
And I will read the resolution. Resolution 13-15, a resolution setting salaries of city employees. Be it resolved that the city council recommended the following raises at their June 24, 2013 meeting, whereas the council, city council approved a 3% raise based on the seven full-time employees' base salaries or a $7,438.08 pool of money. It's 72.5150. Okay, so if you look at your spreadsheet here. In full disclosure, by the way, so Randy, this was one of his last things he was helping us with, and Marilyn and I towards the end had to kind of piece this together in Randy's format, so I apologize, we're kind of going through this the first time. Right, the 3% amount on the spreadsheet here is $7,251.50. It's not $7,438.08. So we have three changes, the date, this, and then addendum. So we'll try this again. Resolution 13-15, setting salaries of city employees. Be it resolved that the city council recommended the following raises at their June 24, 2013 meeting, whereas the city council approved a 3% raise based on the seven full-time employees' base salary or a $7,251.50 pool of money. Each employee's hourly share is based on his or her employee evaluation. These raises will be effective on the first payroll in July 2013. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Logan. Right. And we'll put right after that, C. attached to Addendum A. Right. And then now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Logan, Iowa, passed and approved the 26th day of June 2013. Addendum A, 2013, 2014 employee raise pool. Addendum A, City of Logan employees, 2013. Marilyn Kaiser's new hourly rate would be $14.41. Scott Mucksville, $22.80. Danny Cristo, $14.78. Roger Androy Jr., 15.91. And Kyle Graver, 17.36. So we have a motion, and we have a second on approving Resolution 13-15 with the date, addendum, and total pool dollars change that we've identified here, and it's a resolution setting salaries of city employees. There's no further comments or questions? We've kind of cobbled this a bit. Councilmember Lefebvre?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Crum?
Aye.
And I approve as well. Resolution 13-15 has been approved. Agenda Item Number 10 is discuss getting a credit card for the city.
I know that you guys have all seen a lot of reimbursements in the past few, couple months for especially pool items. I know that we've reimbursed Ray Darling and Tim Labkey and a couple of others, because so many companies won't take checks anymore. One of our, one of our big vendors for pools is Swim Outlet, and they will not take checks anymore. I feel it's unfair to ask these people to put this on their personal credit cards. So I know that we cannot do a debit card because...
I have checked into that.
I talked to Chris Hartwagen, what he said was that since our account has, has to have two signatures, a debit card will not work. It would have to be credit, and the bank, our bank does not do credit cards, so.
It'd be like a corporate credit card coming out of a bank that does support that, hopefully close by, but...
And we'll still be reviewing those charges like the way any claim is registered.
Absolutely. Before we pay a corporate credit card on a monthly basis, you review those the same way? Yeah, I mean, we have a very, at our bank, we have a very large corporate credit card department, and people buy, or they take out these corporate credit cards and buy all their supplies and everything on a regular basis. You know, then there's rewards on those cards and different things. So there's just advantages. It's easier to manage, it's easier to see all of your expenses roll out in a particular format, and just easier to control and manage.
I like the idea, I think, I like the idea, I think it's overdue, we kind of talked about it here recently, it's just kind of come up as something, you know, hey, yeah, we've had this, and kind of passed over it. Can we expand the search? You know, I appreciate Marilyn, you're initiating one to the bank. We've got Community Bank, we'll reach out a little further and see who could give us something that matches our, you know, what our needs are. Do they offer a credit card then? Is our bank here in town? No. Community Bank?
It's Community Bank, do you know? We should probably call Community Bank first, so they'll let us know, then we can, we can kind of go around the surrounding area, Harrison County, then if not, there's other places. Any other questions or comments on that topic? Agenda Item 11 is discuss Mayor Proton's recent actions. Nick, I think you wanted this on here?
I put this on here, I didn't put it on here to, I guess, point fingers, or I did, there's just some items that I wanted explanations for, and I thought, let's do it in the open instead of through emails or whatever, so I, you know, I thought I'd try this, see how it goes. So the first thing that I had on, at the meeting on May 20th, it was the meeting for the Johnson's request for the chickens, the first one for their attorney was here. You placed an item on the agenda to discuss but not vote on, and then you further went to say that you received counsel telling you to do that. And then, following that, I believe the city attorney sent an email on the 24th stating that it was not his opinion. My question was, who was the opinion from that?
It was from Aaron, and when we were going back and forth with our emails, he said that you should let them be heard, you should let them be heard, you should let them be heard. I said, okay, so what I will do is, you can instruct their attorney, that we will put them on the agenda for discussion purposes only, and they will be heard, and then we as a council can decide at that point what we want to do. And we sat down and actually talked about it afterwards, and he says, yeah, okay, so we didn't communicate very effectively, but I circled back with him, even in the email exchange that we have, that basically said, okay, then let the attorney know, he'll be on the agenda to be heard for discussion purposes. He also sent us an email, if you remember, on another item, in one of the council meetings, we talked about the two-person committees, and how I talked about the two-person committees, and he says, well, really, maybe not. And then I sent back and said, well, you really told me that. And he goes, yeah, you're right again. But then I went back and did some research, and you could really do it, but to be safe, it may not be the first court case, you may not want to do it. So what I told Aaron was, is that, you know, we want to pay him, I mean, we want to hire him to give us good advice, and, you know, a lot of times we get a lot of opinions and not a lot of conviction in terms of, you know, I really recommend you do this or do that, and that doesn't necessarily help as much. I would wish he would be a little bit more, you know, guided. Yeah, a little bit more.
I kind of need to answer my next question. It's regarding the police committee meeting with Chief Smith. Know that you just stated how Aaron sent that email stating that we shouldn't have these committee meetings without notice and agendas, but that meeting happened with no notice and no agenda, and that was something that he stated in that email was to avoid the challenge from the budget, that we should post agendas and keep minutes and give the 24 hours notice.
In his opinion, that was the safest way to do that, so we wouldn't maybe be a test case, I think is what he said for the state of Iowa. He said you certainly have the right to do it the way that we had talked about doing it, but for the safest case, and so I guess I assumed the risk in doing that, having that conversation.
The last one I have is regarding Monday night's meeting. You read the Logan City Code for the Mayor Proton Powers and Duties. I'm not going to read them, because you read them on Monday night, of course, so you also read the 16103, the voting rights, that the Mayor Proton does have rights to vote as a council member. I guess my question is, Iowa Code 388.5 under mayor says that the mayor can sign, veto, or take no action on an ordinance amendment or resolution passed by the council, however, the mayor may not veto or an ordinance amendment or resolution in the mayor if the mayor was entitled to vote on such measure at that time. I guess my question is, if you have all the powers of the mayor, then I guess I would assume that 38, or 388.5 would pertain to the Proton's web. assume that 38, or 380.5 would pertain to the Protem as well. So, I guess, I don't understand how you can veto, or you can vote and you have the powers of the mayor, but then this mayor section doesn't pertain, because it's a veto.
Yeah, so I am the, how I interpret this is, is that I am the Mayor Protem, and what is stated in here, what I read before, too, the powers of, the powers and duties, right, except for limitations otherwise provided here in, in 1602. The Mayor Protem shall perform the duties of the mayor in case of the absence and inability of the mayor to perform such duties. And the exercise of the duties of the office of the Mayor Protem shall not have the power to employ or discharge from employment officers or employees if the mayor has the power to appoint, employ, or discharge without the approval of the council. So, the interpretation there is, is all the powers of the mayor except for hire, fire, and appoint. And the mayor, I'm saying code, under the powers and duties of the mayor, and going down to paragraph number four, mayor's veto, sign or veto or take no action on ordinance amendment, right, and then the mayor may veto an ordinance, and you already read that piece. Also with the Mayor Protem, it says Mayor Protem does have the right to vote as well, too. So, I'm not pretending that I'm an expert in it and all of that as well, I'm honest with you. And we got an opinion from Aaron, and I saw another opinion from the League of Cities, Iowa League of Cities, and the Iowa... I did. I do, hold on. Well, let me get that for you, I'm not going to, I'll stop here. So I got an opinion from the Iowa League of Cities, and I'll get the, first gentleman's name is Mickey Shields, and the second one I have here, I can't remember off the top of my head, who's the... Burton? Yeah, yeah. He's the general counsel for the Iowa League of Cities. I'll get it here. So, I posed the question to them, because we got an opinion from our city attorney, and they didn't agree with that opinion, and they agreed with what I, what I said the other day. And so I took action on that.
That's all, that's all I got. I appreciate you answering my questions, and like I said, I just didn't want to, you know, do it emails and whatever, I thought, and, you know, just do it here, so, thank you.
Nick, in every one of my emails to you as well, I put my cellphone, so you can call me anytime you want to call me. Any other questions or comments around that? If not, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 12, which is citizens' questions and comments.
Julie Nagle, 320 West Fifth Street, in Logan. And I just, I just, after the last few meetings, I just keep wondering about some things, and I've decided, well, let's just ask. We keep hearing about Ms. Shorter and her great qualifications, but nobody else seems to know exactly what these qualifications are, and we don't seem to be finding out what they are. Our past city clerks and administrators were trained by the briefest clerks and attended school for city clerks, and I don't know if Ms. Shorter has any immunity. I do not know her, and I have no bad feelings about her one way or the other, but wondering why she is not accepting Mayor, Protem Mayor Fauch's proposal if she's really wanting this job. I think he's made some very fair offer, and unless she has some exceptional credentials that we do have not been aware of, I'm wondering why this is not taking place. Are there any comments about this? Anything? Okay. Well, the only reason I could think of is...
I do.
Oh, okay.
She would accept a lesser, a lesser role.
Well, that's what I'm, so the only problem is the other counsel.
Yeah, I don't think that we agree on what role she should fill, but I firmly believe in my conversation with Vicki that she would fill a lesser role than the role that we talked about on Monday.
And that was kind of what I was assuming. So, if she's not hired, it's the three of them that are responsible for her not being hired, it is not anyone else's fault, if she would accept that. Okay. I'm just also going to try to make that quite clear, who is holding this up. Thank you.
Jim Edelman, 201 Northwind, Logan, Iowa. Just hoping that I can, I just happened to stumble with Nick's question about the veto power. A few months ago, we were doing a lot of research, and obviously, a lot of us have gotten a lot more knowledgeable about codes since we've had reasons to. And I stumbled on some information that might help clarify your question. In the state of Iowa, not every municipality has five-person council and a mayor. There are different forms of government, I'm sure you'll learn more about that soon enough, but, the thing is, that in some of those instances, the mayor hat is entitled to vote in that structure. So, it's referring to the mayor in a certain structure that is entitled to vote, and it has nothing to do with the Mayor Protem in our structure. I, I think that's what you'll find. I, like I said, I'm not a legal expert, it's just something that I stumbled onto, and I think that's correct, I just thought it might help clarify.
It's been a long day, so I found, I found my piece of paper, no skip, so. It's Mickey Shields, who's Assistant Director of the Iowa League of Cities, and it's Bruce Bergman, B-E-R-G-M-A-N, General Counsel.
Thanks.
Any other citizens' questions or comments?
Thank you, most of you adjourned.
Anybody wanting to stay longer? Councilmember LeFever?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
And I approve, too. Meeting adjourned.